Okay. Let's bring this meeting to order, the Board of Supervisors for Monday, January 3rd, 2022. I'd like to stand for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
We stand for America and to the Republic from which it stands, on one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a second, for a moment of silence, for all our servicemen and women and civilians serving overseas. All right. Here we are, January 3rd, reorg for 2022. Welcome, everyone, and welcome and congratulations to our newly-elected officials. Janice Charlton is supervisor, Kathy Frescatour is township supervisor, our wonderful tax collector, Barbara Loftus, and then we have three new auditors, Erica McKee, Savannah Hydrick, and Robert Guarini. I hope I pronounced everyone's names correctly. We should start off with the, we'll do the swearing in. The Honorable Diane Gibbons is here to swear in the auditors, Erica, Savannah, and Robert, and also Bobby, but we'll do the auditors first, please.
All right, come forward. Maybe use the microphone.
Oh, absolutely.
Jane, I think it's one at a time. Yes, it is one at a time. I have to do it one at a time.
That microphone.
You can come right up here if you want.
I just wanted to see the elected.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it works here, too, right here.
That's great, thank you. Great. I have the oath of office for Erica McKee. Can you please come forward?
Hi, what's up, Judge?
And do we have a Bible? You do?
Mark's got it.
Mark's got your Bible.
We're going to be around her, I have to get in on this.
I'm glad, I'm glad. Are you prepared to take the oath of office?
I am.
Right, then, repeat after me. Please put your hand on the Bible, raise your other hand. I, Erica McKee.
I, Erica McKee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Leave that up there, Mark.
Okay.
Savannah Hydrick, can you please come forward? First of all, thank you, I wanted to thank everybody for inviting me here to do this swearing. Savannah Hydrick is a, she and I have almost the exact same past, except for she is much, much, much younger. Can we, can we tell everybody who's here with you so they...
It's my mother, Danielle.
Okay, and you're...
Danielle Hydrick.
All right. Are you prepared to take the oath of office?
I am.
Repeat after me. I, Savannah Hydrick.
I, Savannah Hydrick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Robert Guarini, can you please come forward?
I brought them all with me.
Good. You're going to introduce everybody. I went to school with his sister, so it's like, it's a homecoming for me, for everybody I'm swearing in. Can you introduce everybody?
Well, this is my wife, Mary, my daughter, Maria, and my son, Robert.
Are you proud of him?
Yeah.
Yeah. And he's my current neighbor. Are you prepared to take the oath of office?
I am.
Can you please put your hand on the Bible and raise your other hand and repeat after me? I, Robert J. Guarini.
I, Robert J. Guarini.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Barbara Loftus, please come forward. I just want to say about Barbara, she's my favorite office holder, and she's a tax collector. There's something, something wrong with that. Can you, can you please invite, introduce everybody?
Sure, this is my granddaughter, Emily, my grandson, Drew, and my grandson, Jack.
Okay, all three are going to hold the Bible for Grandma? Sure. Raise your other hand and repeat after me. I, Barbara Loftus.
I, Barbara Loftus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this Commonwealth.
And of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Thank you. That's my seventh time. That's seventh time, so I'm old hat for you. Okay, you can turn that to you. Thank you to everybody for inviting me here.
Thanks, Bob.
It's been an absolute pleasure. I've been here my whole life.
Thank you, Judge Gibbons. All right, so at this time, I'd like to bring up Janice Charlton, and I believe she has Judge Stacy Wallace, the Honorable Stacy Wallace. Welcome.
Before you take your oath, why don't you introduce your family?
Give us the Bible. Well, this is my husband, Curtis, my son, Justin, and then, in the background, I have my younger children that didn't want to come up front, but that's okay, I'm so grateful that they're all here.
Please put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Are you prepared to take the oath of office?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, repeat after me. I, Janice Charlton.
I, Janice Charlton.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution.
I, Janice Charlton, swear, defend, practice this by my...
Let me start again, because I should have done it with less words, okay? I, Janice Charlton, do solemnly swear.
I, Janice Charlton, do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of supervisor.
Of supervisor.
In Warmminster Township.
In Warmminster Township.
Bucks County.
Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And I present to you your certificate of election.
You're official. Thank you.
Janice, you can't go home, you have to come up here now. Yeah. Bad news, Keith. Take your seat in the, what do we call that spot?
She's in the active suit or shoes.
Yeah.
I'm glad to be out.
All right, so now, another great friend of Warmminster, so for Kathy Frescatour, swearing in, we, I'd like to announce the Honorable Judge Dan Fennello.
Please hold the Bible for Mr....
My son, Brad.
Your son, Brad, okay. I think it's on, I think so.
We'll tell you where to stand.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure for me to be here, I've always loved to be here, swearing in, and folks, you know, public service is so rewarding, and it's just a great thing to be in. I want you all to stick around after, you know, the supervisor meeting, because Judge Gibbons and Judge Wallace and I are doing a three-judge panel for the frequent offenders in the house here. But it's time to swear in Mrs. Frescatour, and I am so happy that the voters had the good sense to send Mrs. Frescatour back. She is a consummate public servant, she's been active for years in various endeavors around here, one that I, her and I share in common is the, the activity of the youth, of the youth involved in our sports programs. People just love her, she's a great vote-getter, and she's a great contributor to this board. So, without further ado, Mrs. Frescatour, are you prepared to take the oath of office?
I am.
Okay. She can't, well, she can't re, she's gonna, she's gonna, put your left hand on the Bible and then raise the other one, okay? You know, she works so hard, she's, you know, has a little accident there, so, okay. I, Kathy Frescatour.
I, Catherine Frescatour.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I shall support, obey, and defend.
That I shall support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I shall faithfully discharge.
And I shall faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Fidelity.
With fidelity.
And who's with you here tonight?
This is my oldest son, Brad Frescatour, and this is his fiancee, Rene Connelly.
Okay, welcome, friends, and congratulations, Mrs. Frescatour. So, thanks again, and I want to congratulate Mrs. Frescatour and all the other folks that were sworn in, I'm sure everybody will do a good job, but now I want you to forget that I had the robe on and I want to speak as a private citizen, okay? I want to thank all the members of this board, okay, for, and I'm including Mr. McCauley, Mr. Flagler, Mr. Weisner in this, for bringing this township back to where it should be, okay? And I'm saying that as a 45-year resident of this township, okay? Their stewardship has been very good, and my only hope and my only prayer, okay, Mr. Hayes and all the rest of the members of the board, that we all work together in a bipartisan fashion to do what's best for all these people out here who sent you here. So, thanks very much, and you all have a good night and a happy new year.
Thank you, Your Honor. Now that everyone's sworn in and have taken their seats, welcome to the board, Janice.
Thank you.
Kathy, again.
Thank you.
And to the other board members as well. All right, so, now we have elections, election of officers, we might as well get moving here and get through the order of business. Okay, so we have the election of chair of the Board of Supervisors, so I will call for nominations.
I would like to nominate, with pleasure, Mr. Kenneth Hayes as chair.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
Wait a second. I don't think so, if there's only one.
No, seconds required for nominations.
Okay, so, so we can do a roll call vote, which is the order of business, so we'll, we'll call Ms. Frescatour.
Aye.
Mr. McKee?
Aye.
Ms. Hoover?
Aye.
Ms. Charlton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much for your confidence in me for another, another year.
Well, you've done a heck of a good job the last two years, we figured, you know...
Torture me for another one?
One more, yes.
Okay. It's quite a lot of work, and, you know, I'm actually proud to serve the community. All right, so election of vice chair. So I will call for nominations, actually, I'd like to make the nomination proudly to nominate Catherine Frescatour as vice chair. Are there any other nominations? Okay, being non, we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Congratulations, Kathy, another year.
Thank you.
Looking forward to moving things along again. Okay, so I believe this one will be seconded. We need appointment of township officials, at this point, I would seek a nomination for the, the...
Treasurer.
Treasurer, yes.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Mark McKee for treasurer.
And I'll second it.
Seconded by Judy.
See, we're all fighting to do this for you.
Great, we appreciate it.
He's popular, okay.
All right, so, motion made by Kathy Frescatour, seconded by Judy Hoover for Mark McKee to be the treasurer. We can call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. I believe we need to have a motion for, to appoint the assistant treasurer.
Chairman, I would nominate Tom Scott.
Normally, it's the financial director, Mark.
Okay.
Do you want, do you want to change that, or...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. John Rainey?
John Rainey, please.
Okay, I'll second that.
Sorry, I got that wrong, I always thought we did the township manager, my mistake.
That's, that's coming up. So, so nominated by Mark, motion made by Mark, seconded by me, I guess we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Okay, township secretary, is there a motion to nominate someone on the board for township secretary?
I'd like to proudly ask, motion for Judy Hoover to be secretary.
Seconded.
Seconded by Janice. Okay, let's call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Congratulations. Another year.
Thanks.
Okay, so, motion to appoint the assistant township secretary.
I'd like to nominate Tom Scott.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that. And we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice? And chair votes aye. I know it's, it's going through the roll call, but that's what's required at this point, so. Okay, township solicitor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Randy Flagler of Flagler Law.
And I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Alternate counsel.
Yes, I'd like to motion for Bob, Rob Repko Law, Robert Repko.
I'll second it.
Judy? Okay, we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Unfortunately, I'm a no on this one, Mr. Chairman, it's my third year in and I still haven't met this individual, and I just can't vote for a person that I, that I don't know.
Right, that's fine, I understand. Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
You vote aye, okay, chair votes aye, motion carries 4-1. That's actually, that, we had...
Russ Sacco.
Russ Sacco last time, this is, this is...
I changed my style.
Yeah, I know, I understand, that's fine. Motion carries 4-1. Okay, for township's labor council, I motion to appoint John Groundy from Curtin Hefner.
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Township environmental council, I'd like to keep the council we still have, considering that they, they're probably one of the top environmental councils out there, so I'd like to nominate Barry Steinberg from Kootak Rock.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Let's call the vote. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Okay, township engineer.
I'd like to nominate Craig Kennard from Gilmore and Associates.
Seconded.
Seconded by Janice. All right, let's call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Township traffic engineer.
I'd like to motion to appoint Carol Engineering.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, let's call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Township planner.
I'd like to motion for Russ Benner as the township planner.
That's T&amp;M, right? T&amp;M Associates?
Yeah, T&amp;M Associates.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. All right, thank you very much, that's for the professionals. Okay, so we'll move along to the boards and advisory committees. Is there, the vacancy board, one person for a term of one year.
I'd like to nominate Brian Monroe, motion Brian Monroe, Brian Monroe, yes.
Okay, Judy seconds. Let's call the question. Do we have to do a roll call on all these?
Up to you, these ones, you can do whatever.
No? All right, it'll move it along much quicker, I mean, for the, for the other stuff, I would say that would be fine, but if everyone's in agreement...
Only unless we're split on something, if there's two nominations.
That sounds good.
Okay, that's fine.
Sounds good, Mark.
Yeah. Okay, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you. All right, zoning hearing board.
I'd like to nominate Scott DeRosa, voting member.
I would like to nominate Tina Cairns.
I'll second that.
Okay, let me get this all. Okay, so let's...
Who's the nomination, the second one?
Scott DeRosa by Mark, seconded by Janice, second one was Tina Cairns by Kathy, seconded by Judy.
Thank you.
So, we'll call the question for Scott. Kathy?
Nay.
Mark?
Yes.
Judy?
No.
Janice?
Yes.
And chair will vote nay, motion does not carry, two to three. Okay, so for Tina Cairns, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
No.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
No.
And the chair votes aye, motion carries three to two. Thank you. And by the way, thank you, Scott, for your service, it's been, you know, you've been doing this for a long time, and we appreciate everything that you've done on the zoning hearing board, thank you. Okay, third alternate to the zoning hearing board.
I'd like to nominate Scott DeRosa.
Okay.
Second.
I'd like to nominate, nominate Mary McGee.
I will second that.
All right, so we have Scott DeRosa, motion by Mark, seconded by Janice, Mary McGee, motion by Judy, seconded by Kathy. All right, we'll call the question. For Mr. DeRosa, Kathy?
Nay.
Mark?
Yes.
Judy?
No.
Janice?
Yes.
And the chair votes nay, that motion does not carry. For Mary McGee, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
No.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
No.
And chair votes aye, that motion carries three, two.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa, I know you're in the room, Scott DeRosa was served by the Zerling Board for 24 years, and I think this is unfair treatment here, I do, I just have to speak that.
Yeah, well, we appreciate his service, and we want to bring some fresh faces and ideas into the, into the zoning hearing board, so thank you. Thank you again, Mr. DeRosa. All right, Warmminster Municipal Authority, I'd like to motion to appoint Walt Krisonowski.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other nominations? All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. All right, moving right along to planning commission, I would like to nominate Diane Polsky.
I'll second it.
Judy, second.
I'd like to nominate Wayne McCullough.
I would like, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Excuse me. You got that, Mr. Chair?
Uh, working on it. So that was by Mark.
And seconded by Janice.
Seconded by Janice. Okay.
I would like to nominate Nicole Rineer.
I'll second that.
And this is for the member, correct?
Not the alternate.
Yeah, I believe there's two because didn't James Jolly resign?
James Jolly resigned.
I got that email.
Yeah.
So there's actually two openings, Mark.
Two voting member openings?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. It's not on my updated stuff.
It's not on mine either, but I...
Mine either.
But I know that we received a...
An email from James Jolly.
It must be in John Tinteris.
Yeah, because it was CC'd to me. I saw it a while ago, actually.
Okay.
So...
So we're going to take action for one voting member and then take another action for another voting member?
Either that or we can wait. I know he handed in his resignation. I mean, if the board didn't see it, we can wait.
Because I just don't have, I don't have anything.
Yeah, that's fine. So we'll just... So we'll have Diane Polsky and Wayne McCullough for tonight. Okay, is the board okay? How we work this?
So you have, you have, you have three nominations. The first one was Diane Polsky, who was nominated. So you do that one first.
Okay.
If that one pass, if that one passes, that's the nomination. We can move on first doing the one.
Okay.
The second nomination, we have two, correct?
Yeah, but if, it's for one position.
We're making sure, we have to make sure that that second planning commission is done.
Right. An action on one voting member and then we'll take a separate action for the alternate.
Correct.
So that'll involve another nomination.
That will require another nominations, yes.
All right, so...
So it's still one, correct?
We're doing, we're doing one voting member for the planning commission.
Okay.
We nominated three people.
Okay.
Again, we'll go in the order of the nominations. So the first one was Diane Polsky.
Right.
If she gets an affirmative amount of votes, that is, she's the nomination. That ends that.
So then the second one will be next month?
Yeah.
Or this month?
Yes. Well, we can do, we can do, you can do the second one. We're going to make sure that the vacancy exists. We'll do that, we can do that at the January 20th meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Is everybody okay with that? So we're going to take action on one voting member and then we'll have to take a separate action on the alternate?
Right, which will require a new round of nominations.
The voting action tonight is for one member. There'll be another, once every, it's affirmed that Mr. Jolly resigned, then that'll be the January 20th.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so we have three. We'll call the question for Diane Polsky. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
No.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
No.
And Chair votes aye. She has an incredibly impeccable resume and I think she'll be a great asset to the community.
So does Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
He's been on that board for a lot of years.
I don't disagree. Did you see her resume? She was actually the planner for Baltimore. Yeah, very impressive. And I'd like to see her bring her...
I would have been glad to give her my vote.
Like to see her bring her experience to the township.
I would have been glad to give her my vote for alternate, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, so now that's over then, right?
We have to do alternate.
Now you do, now you mean...
Now we go to alternate.
New round of motions for the alternate.
Okay. We have a motion?
I'd like, oh, go ahead, Mr....
I'd like to nominate Mr. Wayne McCullough.
I will second that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I would like to nominate Pat Boyle.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so let's go with the first one. Wayne McCullough, Kathy?
Nay.
Mark?
Yes.
Judy?
No.
Janice?
Yes.
And the Chair is going to vote nay on this one. So that motion does not carry. Call for Pat Boyle, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
No.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Nay.
Chair will vote aye. That motion carries three to. Thank you, Wayne, for all your service as well.
Thank you, Wayne. Was a tremendous chairman of that committee too, for many years.
You did a great job.
You did a very good job.
All right, Library Board. Now, if we go through all these at once, can there be a motion just for the, all four? If there's no opposition?
Correct, yeah.
I have no objection to ones, there's only four people that submitted names. There's no sense in us doing one at a time.
Right, right.
Okay, so...
Nominate all.
I'd like to make a nominations for Lorraine Brown, Jerry Shadra, Rosaria Giurla, and Michelle Squishamara.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're all on there.
Okay.
I'm going to have to make a nomination here, Mr. Chairman, because I can't, I can't sit here and let Jerry Shadra not be reported.
No, she did.
She did.
She did.
She just mispronounced her last name as Shadra.
She'll be over, she'll be over here in about five minutes.
Yes, I know.
I'm thinking, wait a minute.
Hiding in the back office.
So it's Lorraine Brown, Jerry Shadra, Rosaria Giurla, and Michelle Squishamara. Okay, so seconded by Kathy.
Yes.
Any other nominations? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. All right, I'd like to make a motion for Construction Board of Appeals for John Tenari.
I'll second him, Mr. Chair. Oh, Janice, you can have it.
Okay, being as he was the only one that submitted his name, I guess, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right. Golf Advisory Committee.
I'd like to nominate Dalton George.
I think we can do these all.
You want that for the golf? Okay. Oh, yeah, we could, we could do that.
We could do it all at once, but...
Sure. Go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Dalton George.
Okay, I'll second that. We also have Charles Vinsallet and Elliot Drexler.
Well, those are two different appointments.
I know.
Are we voting for Advisory Committee?
We're voting for Golf Advisory Committee, two people.
Two, two years and then there's another one for a citizen.
Two citizens advisor.
Citizen advisor for one year.
So we're vote, this is for a member.
This is for a member.
All right, so Elliot, I know, we went, she jumped a little ahead.
I'm sorry.
I said, no, no, it's cool, it's cool. So just so we clarify, we'll have Elliot, I'd like to nominate Elliot Drexler and Charles Vinsallet.
For active members.
Active members.
Active members.
Citizen advisor.
And for the...
So...
Citizen advisor, Dalton George, Janice, motion that one.
We can't do them like that. We have to do these two first, right?
The position for, for each position separately.
Each position, okay. Okay, we'll do them separate to make it fair.
Two active members.
So we have three, we have three nominations.
Sorry.
No, no, no.
Janice was nominating Dalton George for the citizen advisor.
Right.
And I'll second that.
Right. I know that's what she meant.
So let's go with the first one first. You rescind Dalton for the, for the first...
I'm assuming I am, yes.
We're going to nominate Dalton George for citizen advisor.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, no objections at all. So is there a second for the Golf Committee members of Elliot Drexler and Charles Vinsallet?
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, let's call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Okay.
Okay, Janice?
I'd like to nominate Dalton George as a citizen advisor to the Golf Committee.
I will second that.
Thank you.
Okay, being as there's none, there's one still open position for everyone out there.
Anybody interested?
Tell us now.
So let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right, Fire Mail Advisory Council. Again, there's, there's, actually, there's an open position. It's not listed here. So we're going to have to hold off on one until the January 20th. So if I may, I would like to nominate Donald Glider and Lena Chero.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other, any other questions or nominations? Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Environmental Advisory Council Chairperson, I would say we keep the same one. I would like to nominate Amy Sanchez-Hallington.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead. Okay, Mark, good.
Okay, we'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh.
Chair did get a message from Jerry Shadra. She said, thanks, saved her a trip over. Saved me a trip.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to Parks and Rec. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Renee Steckler, Michelle Myers, and Anthony Mesa to the Advisory Committee for a two-year term.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Citizen advisor. I guess I'll motion for that as well. Deana Niles, Pat Boyle, Patty Crossen, and Jeff Drewlis.
I'll second, Chair.
Second. Mark, thank you. Let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right, Pension Investment Advisory Committee. No one put their name in for that. That's actually a pretty, pretty interesting in position and...
There's a lot in flux with that committee right now. We're learning, every meeting, we're learning new things.
There's always something going on there.
I attended one of the meetings and I have to say, you learn quite a lot and it can actually be applicable to your own finances. So if anybody's interested, please apply because we need folks to serve on these boards.
Someone could put a letter of interest into the Township Manager and we could take that action at the next meeting if someone is interested in serving on this board.
That's correct. And actually, that, that first, that fourth quarter meeting will probably come up early February.
Right.
So it would be, it would be...
Anyone out there that's interested, please come forward. We are going to appoint the union representative.
Yes, yes. I guess I'll motion for John Barnago, Jean Astorito, or Astardo.
I'll second him, Mr. Chair.
Uh, wait, we have one more.
Yeah, we had a third, didn't we?
Heather Lipinski, actually, from what I understand, put her name in.
I did see that.
Heather Lipinski.
And is she from Weedeo? Or is she from?
Yes.
Weedeo, okay.
Library, yeah.
Did you motion, you said?
I motioned.
You motioned?
He's second to this.
Oh, okay.
Okay, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right, Ben Wilson Center. I'd like to nominate Judy Hoover as one of the non-voting members.
I'll second that.
Is there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate John Panofsky.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Judy.
Chairman, I'll have to call for a roll call on these.
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
No problem.
Okay, let's call a question for Judy, please, first. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. You okay? Okay. That motion carries five oh. All right, John Panofsky. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
No.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
No.
And the Chair will vote aye on that. Motion will carry three to. There are hard positions to fill for some reason. All right.
Okay.
Now we come to the fun part. Yeah, yeah. All right, Supervisor Liaisons. First one would be... Planning. Hold on a second here. I will nominate Judy Hoover for planning.
I will second that.
Call a question? Any other nominations? Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Okay, now, Zoning Hearing Board. Right now, currently, it's me.
Okay. I'll nominate Ken.
I'll second.
And I'll nominate Janice Charlton.
Okay. I'll second that. Let me get my paperwork squared here. All right, so we'll call a question for, let's call a question for myself first. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but I'm a no.
That's okay.
It's okay.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
I guess no, because I'd like to do it.
Well, the Chair will vote aye. So that motion will carry three to. Thank you. And I'm there now. I just, I just want to...
Stay.
Now that we've gotten certain things under control here, I can spend a little more time over there at the zoning. So the motion carries three to for me. All right, but Janice?
That's okay. I can sit out on that side just as easy as I can sit over here. It's fine.
That's true. And at some point, you may have that opportunity in the very near future.
Okay.
All right. Liaison to the municipal authority. I would like to nominate Kathy Frescatore.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Any others? Call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Were you an aye?
No, go ahead. We're good.
Okay. Chair votes aye. I believe that's five oh. Okay. Library Board?
I'd like to motion for Judy Hoover.
I'll second that. Any other questions? Well, we'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. That motion carries five oh. Environmental Advisory Council.
I'd like to nominate Ken Hayes.
I will second that.
All right, any other nominations? Call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Mark? Golf Advisory Committee.
Oh, it's my favorite.
That's right. So I will nominate Mark McKee.
I will second that.
Thank you very much.
All right, there'll be no more, I'm assuming there's no more nominations. So we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the Chair votes aye. That carries five oh. Doing a good job over there. That's a...
They sure are.
Our golf course is incredible.
Yes, it is.
They're doing a great job. Okay, so Parks and Rec. I would like to nominate Mark McKee for the Parks and Rec.
I'd like to second that.
Any other nominations? I will call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. That's five oh. All right, moving along here. One Supervisor Liaison to the belt Ben Wilson Center.
This is not necessary because you already appointed him.
Yes, that's true.
Kick that out.
Okay.
Okay, we'll motion to table that. Do we have to table that or just?
You don't have a motion, so you don't need to table it.
Okay, all right, good. All right. Pension Investment Advisory Committee, two Supervisor Members.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Ken Hayes and Mr. Mark McKee.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Any other nominations? Call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye.
Those are, those are public meetings too, anyone that's interested, because, you know, we are having tremendous pension difficulties here. Any of the, from the public, more than, glad to attend the meetings.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're public meetings.
Find out how our pensions works, and what we're doing to correct the problems.
Oh, it is.
Oh, it is, oh, okay, okay, okay. I didn't see it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good point, Mark, it's, anybody can attend that meeting. PFM's doing a tremendous job right now, and we hope they continue to service the pension funds and our OPEB fund in their fiduciary manner that they continue to do, so. Okay, moving along. We'll establish the Township Depositories. Is there a motion to designate First National Bank of Newtown as the Township Depository for calendar year 2022?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, I got some more here. Where other institutions invest in as may be deemed necessary for the best possible interest rates, including M&amp;T Bank, TD Bank, Pliget, Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, PNC Bank, TD Ameritrade Trust Company, and US Bank.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Treasurers' Bond, is there a motion to set the Treasurers' Bond and Assistant Treasurers' Bond at $2 million?
Motion.
Second? Okay, any other questions or comments? Let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Alright, Establish the Regular Schedule of Public Meetings, it's listed here, January 20th, March 3rd, April 21st, June 2nd, July 21st, September 1st, October 20th, no...
I would just say the first and third.
Yeah, first and third Tuesdays of every month.
Thursdays.
Thursdays, yes, first and third Thursdays of every month, as outlined here in this, in the table. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, five oh. Alright, Set and Affirm the Calendar Year 2022 Non-Collective Bargain Agreement Township Holidays. New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, day after Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second?
We're still trying to figure out about the New Year holiday for '23, I think we may have to have the reorg on the day off and the same day, we're not sure yet. Are you talking about on January 2nd? January 2nd would be considered a holiday.
Yeah, and that would be a first Monday?
Yeah.
So then it would be...
We would go to the Tuesday.
It would be on to the Tuesday, right, right, okay. Alright, everyone, everyone aware of that, next year, January 1st Monday would be the actual New Year's holiday? So the reorg will be on the Tuesday, January 3rd, correct?
Correct, yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Motion to accept these holidays?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Kathy? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Affirm Township Meeting Policy, is there a motion to adopt the attached policy as you've seen in your package for the calendar year 2022?
Motion.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Alright, any other questions or comments? Let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Alright, I'd like to motion to appoint Judy Hoover as the Voting Delegate to PSATs.
No objection.
Still want it?
Yeah, I do, I find it interesting.
Yeah, okay, and, and everyone can attend PSA, I think we are going to get to, go to...
I just said to Janice, you don't want that, that's usually the one we throw to the wolves.
Yeah.
You don't really, sir, but you, she might like it too, too, down the road.
You know, I'm a little bit of a geek. Geeks like it.
Alright, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Alright, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye. Thanks, Judy. I'll be looking forward to it.
She's the only one I've ever known, it's like all excited about it.
I'll be with you.
I'll be, I, I, I'll be attending as well with you, because...
You can all attend the meetings, I'm just the voting member.
You can vote.
You can take classes, you can do, take as many classes.
You can vote.
Talking about this meeting, though.
I'll listen to it on the radio, from the turnpike, from the turnpike.
Okay, so we have no new business, correct?
That's correct.
Yay.
Alright, where are we at here?
Consent Agenda.
Consent Agenda. Alright. So I need a motion to, now, do we have to do these all separately, or we can do them all at once?
That's why it's a consent agenda.
Yeah, exactly, so a motion to approve Resolution 2022-01, setting the police officers' contributions to the pension fund. Approve Resolution 2022-02, setting the at-will employee contribution to the pension fund. Resolution 2022-03, setting Warmminster Township's contributions to the defined contribution pension fund. 2022-04, setting ASME Local 2289 employee contributions to the pension fund. 2022-05, setting ASME Local 1598 employee contributions to the pension fund. I think there's one more, right?
Yes.
Yes. And a motion to approve Resolution 2022-06, to dissolve the Economic Development Committee. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
And with this vote and the next vote, Mr. Chair, you will require public comment.
Yes, okay. Any comments from the Board? Any comments from the public? Alright, being none, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh, thank you. Alright, our new Treasurer will consider the supplemental bill list, Mark, I'll leave that to you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we consider the supplemental bill list dated December 30th, 2021, in the amount of $1,320,834.11.
Okay, I'll second that. Any questions or comments? Any from the public? Okay, being none, we'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Okay, public comment. Financial statement? Oh, wait a minute, hold on, hold on, hold on, Bob, jumping the gun. I'm looking at two different sheets here.
It's confusing.
The November...
November, ah, yeah, yeah, John, John's up, the financial statement.
Yes, that's right.
So for the sake of time, we're just going to move most of the detailed information to the next meeting in two weeks, but just so you guys have, we're pretty much running the same, the end of November as we were at the end of October. But we'll go into more detail, I've been working with Mr. Scott about giving you some more detail of what operational savings, on a more detailed level, we've been recognizing for the year, so we'll probably have some more, maybe even a presentation.
Okay, great, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Alright, now the part we've all been waiting for, public comment. Bob, you first?
Hello, everyone, Bob Welsh, Holloway Avenue, Warmminster, PA. First, I want to say Happy New Year to everyone, everyone, please stay safe and healthy. I want to make a comment in regards to Mr. DeRosa. He's served on many committees in this township for many, many years. He's on the Planning Commission for over six years, he's in the Zoning Board for over 20 years, over 20 years. I think this board is making a mistake not reinstating him, just for the experience alone. You guys stood up here and took an oath to protect and serve this township, I think you're doing a disservice here, and I just wanted to make my comment on that, thank you.
Mr. Welsh, before you sit down, I have, I owe Mr. Welsh an apology, because I gave him the wrong direction to put a letter in for interest for the Water Authority. Your letter did come in today, and it, and it wasn't our packet, but I didn't have it on here, so that was, and, and we discussed it today between the Township Manager and I, that, that was, that was my mistake, that that didn't go in the right way, so.
Okay, I understand, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may say a few things?
Certainly.
Just, again, behalf of Flagrant Associates, we want to thank the Board for reappointing us, we've had the honor of serving you guys for the last two years. Randy is sorry he couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately, he's othered the weather, and just with, you know, the issues with public health crisis, he wanted to stay home, keep everyone safe, as well as get him and his wife healthy. For me personally, I've enjoyed my time here in Warmminster, I grew up in Warrington, I lived for, Warrington for 25 years of my life. A lot of my friends grew up in Warmminster, I spent plenty of time in Warmminster, it's great to be in my own home community, so I really appreciate it. We wanted to welcome Ms. Charlton to the Board, it's been a great experience in these last two months in dealing with her and getting to know her, so we thank you very much. Congratulations, Kathy, being reappointed, congratulations to our auditors, I think Ms. McKee is still in the audience, and of course, congratulations to Bobby Loftus on being taken, reelected as tax collector, so we just wanted to thank you again, and thank you for your confidence in us.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, let me see, upcoming meetings, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the Board Supervisors will conduct its regular business meeting for January on the 20th, in this room, at 7:00 PM, at which we are hoping to have a discussion on the 2022 Road Paving and Handicap Ramp Construction Program, among other things.
Looking forward to that, thank you.
And John's presentation as well.
Mm-hmm. Looking forward to that, too.
And we've, we've mentioned a few times already tonight, the Pension Committee. So the meeting is going to be this month, on the, I think it's the 27th.
For the fourth quarter of 2022, correct?
Yes.
That should be on this list here.
Oh, it is.
January 27th, Thursday, January...
Thursday, 27th, thank you.
So there's time for someone to get their name in.
And it's at, it's in the afternoon, it's not a night meeting, so.
Yes, it's usually at 4:00, I think, isn't it, or?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Alright, so I would just like to welcome Janice to the Board, congratulations, looking forward to working with you, there's a lot of challenges here, as I, I do have one announcement, we did have executive session today. We were talking about...
Labor negotiations.
Labor negotiations and, and other litigation. Pardon me, I should have, you all, that, about the only time I could get to it, so that's the one comment I do have, welcome to the Board, we look forward to working with you. To everyone who did not get a position tonight, we thank you for all your service, you've done a wonderful job, we, the Township and the Board appreciates what you've done. To all the other people that we've nominated and appointed, welcome again, we have the same expectations for you as well, we're, we're confident that you will do the same job, if not better, than what was done before. And Happy New Year to everyone, and be healthy, that's all I have, and Kathy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank everyone who had all the thoughts and prayers and cards, I slipped on black ice, and it's been a difficult journey, and I've got a lot of, lot of rehab ahead of me, but it really warms the heart when you have so many folks, you know, wishing you well, so I thank you for all of that. Also, I would like to wish each and every one of our residents good health, happiness, and prosperity in the new year, and that's it, I, I want to say what a pleasure it is to work with my fellow members, looking forward to working with you too, Janice, congratulations, congratulations to all those who have won their elections, and also to all the ones who've gotten appointments on the Board, thank you for your interest in wanting to serve, I've been serving now for over 40 years in this township, so I want to thank you all. That's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Mark? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, I want to start off by wishing everyone a happy and healthy New Year, as we continue to rage with this, this pandemic that continues to rage on, I just want to remind everybody to do your best to keep yourself healthy and safe. I want to welcome Kathy back, congratulations, and I want to welcome Janice, Janice, who will be sitting next to me now, I always have some breath mints here, in case you're hungry, I have my hand sanitizer, if you need it, you know, I have my bag of treats here, there's the pocket, the pocket breathalyzers in there, in case you need it. But no, welcome, and I look forward to serving with you and with the rest of the Board, and, and thank you, and, and thank you to Steve Weisner, who's here again tonight.
Yes.
Thank you again, Steve.
Yes, Dave, thank you.
And that's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Judy?
Well, that, that's what I wanted to do, I know you can't hear me with my mask, so, I want to thank Steve Weisner, it's been especially, he really guided us through this tumultuous year that everybody wants to forget, let's start off, 2022 is going to be a good year for all of us, right? So Happy New Year to everybody, welcome, Janice.
Thank you.
Thank you to Mary Owens for all the work she put in in the last year, we're going to miss her, and everybody, remember that there's others there that are not as fortunate as you, so look out for them, and make sure that you say something if you see something, thank you.
Thank you, Judy, and Janice?
Hi, good evening, I just wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve the residents of Warmminster, this is a great honor for me, and I will not forget that I'm a public servant, I'd like to thank the Board for the opportunity to work with you, and wish everybody a happy and healthy 2022, thank you.
You're welcome, welcome aboard. Steve, I think you, you, this is, you know, you've escaped orbit a few times, but you know, this gravitational force pulls you right back.
I thank the Board, all the Board members for their support, it's always a pleasure to serve Warmminster and this Board, it's an exciting place, there's no doubt about it, and, you know, I think we've accomplished a lot over the years, so thank you very much.
Yeah, our pleasure, and I look forward to, I think you'll be around a couple more times. Great.
Just nod, nod in this role, because you've got this guy.
That's right.
But yes, that's out of...
That's right.
He's, uh...
As I said, you escaped, you escaped the gravitational force.
We pressed him to duty today because John Tentera wasn't available, and he, and Steve took to it like he takes everything else.
As always, Steve came up big for the Township again, thank you, Steve.
Yeah, he's like our rescuer.
Yeah, alright.
Dave to the rescue.
Here I come to save the day.
He's like Superman.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, thanks, everyone, thank you, everyone, be safe.